Okay, we're ready. Welcome everyone to our regular city council meeting on Tuesday, November, excuse me, December 11th, 2018. We're located at Veterans Memorial Hall, starting at 6:00. And for the record, we have all members of council present. We'll call the meeting to order. And if you all would help start with a moment of silence. Dr. Heading, would you lead us in the pledge?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks everyone. So tonight on our agenda, we do have a consent agenda that we'll get through quickly. And we have, we do have, on business items, it is titled, four business items. With councils consensus on this, I'd like to just open up public comment for all items on business. We could do it that way. And we'll just have one public comment, period. And we'll start that at the very beginning of our meeting. And then we'll go into consent. And following consent, we'll have, are we going to forego announcements on this meeting and just go into the business item? Or do you have announcements at the beginning? Okay, so we'll go into announcements. And then we'll go into our first business item, and council member and mayor remarks. Then there will be presentations for council member Matt Makowetski, council member John Heading, and Mayor Irons. And then there will be the oath of office, presentation of certificates, and swearing in. And then the newly elected seated council will come to the dais, and there'll be remarks there. So with that, we'll get started. And announcements, Red.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry to be a wet blanket tonight. But I just want to take the opportunity tonight to recognize one of our special Morro Bay citizens, Ed Griggs, for the contributions that he's made to our community. Ed had concerns about the tank demolition on Panorama. And he formed a neighborhood group, Morro Bay Stakeholders, to learn about the issues and to bring their concerns to the planning commission. And then through neighborhood workshops and presentations, Ed and his group made helpful suggestions that improved the project. They continue to monitor, and they provide helpful input as the project continues. I think Ed exemplifies what we want our citizens to be and to do. So I want to say thank you, Ed, for your thoughtful and effective approach to citizen participation. And I'd like to also add that Ed is an artist with a camera. And he, along with other local artists, will have some displays this Saturday at Buttercup Bakery from 11 to 3:00. So please go by and treat yourselves to some holiday cheer and support our local artists. Thanks.
All right, great. Anything, Matt, John, Marleus?
I do have an announcement, which is unusual for me. I just wanted to update everyone. At our last regular meeting, we did declare a shelter crisis, a homeless shelter crisis emergency. And that was in anticipation of applying for a grant from the Housing Services Oversight Council. There's a pot of state money. And I was initially concerned that we had to have an application in by December 31st. So we were going to schedule a meeting for today. But the update is that they are issuing the RFP in January. So we will be moving forward, doing some research on a temporary shelter, warming shelter here in Morro Bay, and hopefully applying for that grant. So I just wanted to update everyone.
Okay, Marleus, thanks for that. Moving on, we'll open it up for public comment for the entire meeting. At this point, I have three speaker slips, but following that, I'll just open up for public comment for people that want to come up. And then following public comment, we'll go into consent and into the regular course of business. So first up, I have three speaker slips for public comment. And we have Dan Sedley, and then John Weiss, and then Bob Keller. Come on up, Dan, welcome.
Hi, my name is Dan Sedley. I live in Morro Bay. Question of clarification, is this the only comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you. First and foremost, I wanted to thank the outgoing city council. I know that a lot of work and time goes into this job. There is no doubt. I've seen the effort that each one of you have put into this. And albeit, I don't think we're all on the same patterns, I know that you work hard in doing the best that you can for our city. And I want to show appreciation for that, from Dan Sedley to all of you. You may think that I don't appreciate you, but I appreciate you all, okay? That doesn't mean that we don't disagree sometimes, but that's okay. We're all trying to work for the betterment of Morro Bay. I also want to congratulate the members of the city council, from Mr. Heading, to Ms. Davis, and Jeff Heller. I look forward to working with them and their serving on the city council. Along with a subject that's near and dear to me, in terms of bringing our city back together and the divisiveness and polarization, I again want to bring the code of civility. And I am challenging each of the new city council to make this a priority, to encourage people to speak, to hear what they have to say, to not make decisions until all of the facts and all of the comments have been heard. The current code of civility and what's printed on here only pertains to restrictions on the community. And that's not the way that it should be at all. It should be the encouragement of people to speak in a civil manner by all of us. And I encourage a code of civility which states that. I would love to work on such a document for the city council if given the opportunity. But in order to end this divisiveness and polarization, I think that people have to be welcomed here and not shut down, such has happened at certain times, which I'm not going to speak about right now. I'm talking about going forward and encouraging people to speak and not shutting them down. And then we have back and forth, and that's not a productive process. So again, I'm asking all of the new city council to pledge to a new code of civility that applies to everyone in this meeting, and some new ideas on how to get there. That's what I'm here to say. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council, for your service.
Thanks, Dan. Next up, John Weiss.
And I want to offer greetings and happy holidays to everyone. And I also want to again thank my friends and supporters, and also congratulations to each one who ran, whether they were selected or not, and in particular, those who were selected, since they're here. And I think it's a good opportunity. I would like to offer special congratulations to my friend, my new friend, Jeff Heller. And I believe he will be a voice of balance on this project that is before us and other issues that come before the city council. I look forward to Don, who's a fellow Rotarian, and I hope that we will all listen. While I was not elected, I am happy to show my support when decisions are made to further the cause, and glad the votes will be counted as we move on. I ask us particularly to support our first responders, to listen to our new council members. I've been in town for 40 years, and it's been an honor to serve in some capacity or One in particular I've supported and is going on right now, yesterday, today, and tomorrow is the Caroling Cops, which brings joy to the community. In many cases, the gifts that they provide are the only gifts that they receive. And I'm proud, as a member of our local Rotary Club, that we were a significant supporter for that. And also, I'm involved with the refreshments they're going to have tonight, so I'm going to leave now, but I hope you have a great meeting. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Next up, Bob Keller. Welcome, Bob.
Mayor, council members, staff, and all Morro Bay citizens. My name is Bob Keller, a Morro Bay resident. First of all, congratulations to the newly elected council. I thank them for offering their time and service to our beautiful city of Morro Bay. Over the last few years, we've had elections, reelections, and also a failed mayor recall, which never got on the ballot for lack of required signatures. So apparently, we had a council that the city of Morro Bay wanted. So it seems the citizens of Morro Bay were aware that the present council was listening. I personally thought they listened, were transparent, very professional. I thank them for listening to the majority of the people of Morro Bay. Now that we have a new elected council, I'm confident the new council will continue to listen, be transparent, and professional. And to conclude, to thank our outgoing council members, Mayor Jamie Irons and Councilman Matt Makowetski, for their service and many hours they have spent to make Morro Bay a better place and more beautiful. I'm going to add something as a PS. When Matt was elected to the council, he wasn't wearing ties. So I gave him a vintage tie, so he could be professional. I thank you guys for doing your service to the city of Morro Bay, putting in long hours. And anybody that does your job should be given a lot of credit. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Those are all the speaker slips I have. Is there anybody else for public comment? Rigmore, welcome.
I wasn't going to say anything. My name is Rigmore, resident of Morro Bay.
If you can pull it down a little bit, please, Rigmore. Thank you.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I am going to say, I'm going to really miss the two people that's leaving. And I'm very happy the rest are staying. And I know I'm supposed to say thank you for your service, but that doesn't come natural to me, because I think that you've been lucky being able to serve Morro Bay for all these years. And we have gotten more things accomplished than any of the council meetings I've watched before. There were some things accomplished for certain little groups, but not for the whole city. So I'm very thankful for those who are staying, and I'm sad for the ones that's going. And I'm glad you have gotten a great group here, and I hope they're all staying. And Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Rigmore. Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, and my fellow citizens. My name is Christine Johnson, and I'm a retired city council member from the city of Morro Bay. Happily retired, I should say. I'm sure we're all grateful for the end of another election cycle. In addition, I am also grateful to all the candidates who ran for election. To each of them, your love for the city was evident all through the election. And I truly believe that each one of you have the city's best intentions at heart for the long run. I know it's daunting and humbling, from personal experience, to go through the process. People are more likely to tell you why they're not going to vote for you than why you might be a good council member. To our new council members, Addis and Heller, as retired council member myself, I wish you the best of luck in settling into your new role. You both have shown the ability to make strong connections with people through your interpersonal skills. These same skills will serve you well as you transition from candidate to council member, and work collaboratively, when possible, for the benefit of all of us. Personally, I've known Don for over 10 years, and I have great faith in you, Don, as a leader and community builder. To incoming Mayor Heading and outgoing council member Makowetski, it was my pleasure to serve with both of you in the council for two years. I'm grateful you decided to run for mayor, John, and I know you will enjoy your retirement, Matt. John, I have no doubt that with your leadership, the council and the city will carry forward to completion critical initiatives and projects, while at the same time focusing on policies that enhance our overall quality of life, while keeping our eye on long-term fiscal sustainability. Council member Makowetski, thank you for serving as a role model for all people who work full-time and wish to serve on the city council. I know your dedication to both roles, along with being a husband and a parent, will inspire others to run for elected office as well. Thank you for sharing your time with all of us. Mayor Irons, I'm grateful for your unflappable dedication to service to the city of Morro Bay for over the past six years. In our four years of service together on the council, we faced seemingly endless series of hard decisions that had no easy solutions. Thank you for your leadership, for staying true to the process, for recognizing when mistakes were made, and most importantly, for always seeing the positive and good in all of us as citizens of Morro Bay. Best wishes for continued success to council members McPherson and Davis. We are all counting on each of you, with the new council, to continue to help move Morro Bay forward. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Anymore saying none? I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Thanks very much, everybody, for your comments and for attending here tonight. First up, we do want to get to our consent agenda. Are there any items on consent to pull?
I just wanted to mention that I did have a correction to item A4 on page 50 of 61, which authorizes applicants for the two cannabis businesses to begin the process. And the date listed on the original, what we had here was June 1, and it should be July 1, 2018, was when applicants were initially accepted. So I have already instructed Dana to correct that in the resolution.
Okay, thanks for bringing that up, Marleus. Any other items of discussion there? I take a motion to approve all items on consent with a noted correction on item A4, as discussed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heading, second by Mr. Davis. Any further comments, discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. That concludes consent. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our first item of business, comments by current mayor and council members. And if it's okay, if there's no starting the order, Matt, do you want to go first on that?
Sure.
All right, good. Thanks.
I kind of feel like red right now. I have prepared remarks. I've been watching it for a while now, and I'm like, I gotta do this. Okay. Finally. It's all right. All of us are here tonight, and we share a passion for Morro Bay. We have staff, volunteers, residents that bleed Morro Bay blue. My time in council has revolved around this passion. We all believe in Morro Bay. In like fashion, there have been a number of big-ticket items that we've been able to move forward on, namely the War of the General Plan. But we couldn't have done it alone. And for that, I'd like to thank every single one of you, your passion, even if you perhaps do not agree with me or this council. And I had this talk with Dan during the break. Morro Bay works on kind of a yin and yang theory. And with that, we're moving ahead with this city. So I wanted to thank all of you for that passion. Thank you. In addition, I'd like to thank city staff, all of you, working with you from city council, from my time on PWEB, from Harbor. You guys really carry the vision of Morro Bay and make this being on council a workable reality. So thank you very much. Volunteers, and looking out at the crowd tonight, I know there's tons of you out there. I'd like to pass along my indebtedness and thanks for all you do, from advisory boards to Monday night meals in the vets' hall. Our city would not function without you. My supporters, and I think all of our supporters, wow, what an effort. During my election time, I was floored by the support that came out of the woodwork to help put me in office. But I'd like to reiterate, it's not about an individual up here, it's about us. And so with that, you being willing to volunteer and put your time in, so incredible. From monetary support to help knocking on doors, you put me on council, but you put us on council. Your zeal for Morro Bay is very important. Last, and this has only happened, I think, twice in my four years, my wife is here tonight. My daughters got out of it. Okay? But I'd like to thank my wife, Diana, and my two daughters, Hannah and Zoe, for their support and patience. I want to underline the patience part of it. I was no doubt a basket case at various times throughout the last four years. You've been invaluable and kept me going. I love you so much. And then last and closing, the journey for our city continues. I hope the best to our new council. There are some important items coming before you, but I know and feel comfortable, as and I think Christine said it best to me during her time not on council, she says, I'm going to enjoy watching the meetings on TV. So that's what I'll do. And so I know that you're going to carry this forward, and so I can't wait to watch it happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Good evening, and welcome. Thank you. And I will, since I'm returning, I'll reserve my comments with regard to returning for when I return. Does that make sense? Good. I'm glad, we're all clear. What I wanted to do quickly was to recognize the outgoing council members this evening. I met Matt Makowetski for the first time at the Tribune interview. I had no idea who he was and where he came from. But after that interview, we chatted in the parking lot. I don't know if you remember this, Matt, you probably have forgotten it, probably wanted to forget it. But here's what I recall from Matthew. And I talked to him, and I asked him about, you know, what he did and what's important to him. And he told me that he was a teacher, and that he lived in Morro Bay, yet commuted to Lompoc daily. And I thought to myself, man, that's crazy, going to Lompoc and back. And then I said, well, you know, there are positions in Morro Bay, why haven't you considered Morro Bay? And he said, I've had the opportunity to influence a generation, and now I'm working on the second generation with the work that I do in that community, and I can't leave it. And you, Matthew, impressed me greatly with your character, your fortitude, and your personhood. And that has carried through in everything that you've done on council. It's been great to get to know you and to get to work with you. I'm going to miss you greatly here, and I congratulate you for your four years of service. Matt also went through a time of injury that was very severe, and we were with him through that. He made it through, and I know when he came back, it was very difficult for him. It was an eye issue, if I may say that publicly. And it was difficult for him to focus and maintain, because it was very painful. But you, your composure through that was outstanding. And so thank you for your service, look forward to your input as a community member at the dais in the future, and look forward to working with you. Mayor Irons? I like your new glasses, first of all. Didn't think I noticed, huh? They really look sharp, and I wanted to let you know that the other day, but I thought I'd save it for tonight. Most people don't get to know people until you work extremely closely with them. You think you know them, and you have attitudes and perceptions about who they are. But until you get down in the trench, one-on-one, working together on a council subcommittee, as we have done, on more than one council subcommittees, and continued to do up to today, talking about an issue that we are co-members of a subcommittee on, you don't begin to understand who people really are. I had a perception of who Jamie Irons was prior to coming on council. And what I've learned, I guess, in life, I learn a lot, but one of the things I've learned that's important is perceptions are your own reality until truth becomes apparent. Perceptions are your own reality until truth becomes apparent. And with Mayor Irons, the perception that I had coming in was formulated on things that I had seen or inputs, not much direct interaction. But when you work in the trenches with somebody, you find out who they are and what they're made of. And I am, I'm here to tell you, Jamie, I'm proud to have had the opportunity to work with such a principled, composed individual. You have, through six years at times, bared the direct hit for the remainder of the council. You've done that willingly, without complaining or without remorse. And I thank you for that. I thank you for your unending time commitment and attention to detail and process, which I've had to learn is extremely important, coming from the private sector, where things move very rapidly. I've learned how to respect the public process because of you. And for that, I am very grateful, and will use those tools coming in. I must say, most I will miss are one-on-one conversations, talking about strategy and improving Morro Bay and working together for the good of that. And I just want to end by thanking you for your unending and your humble service to the community. Good luck to you in the future. Thank you.
Marleus? Yeah, please.
Well, I didn't. I didn't prepare remarks like Matt did, but I'm going to speak from the heart. I want to say, first of all, what a pleasure it has been to serve on this council with these other people. I can't tell you how much I've learned from them, how much I enjoy them, and how much I respect them. And to our outgoing members, I'm going to really miss them. I've known Jamie now. We had a meet and greet at our house for him when he first said he was going to run for mayor. And I have worked for him on each one of those six campaigns, and if he decides to run again, I'll be the first in line to help him. I have so much respect for this man, and I watched him grow into this job and just do an outstanding job as mayor. And with Matt, I served for two years when he was the chair of PWEB, the Public Works Advisory Board. And then he was elected, and I took over his chair. And so now I've worked two years with him on council. And talk about the dedication to this community. And I think you said it so well, John. And I think you said it so well, John, when you talked about what he goes through just to make meetings, and how hard he works just in his job and then comes. And so I don't blame you for wanting to end a meeting at 11 o'clock. I really don't. I want to say, a lot of people think that all of our decisions are 5-0. We've been accused of being always together. But I want you to know that I've been on the losing end of a lot of 4-1, or at least a number of 4-1 and 3-2 decisions. And probably the most embarrassing one was about a month ago, when I made three motions to extend the meeting past 11 o'clock, and all three failed, three to two. So, just so you know, we don't always agree. But I think what we have had as a full council here is respect for each other. So even if we disagree and don't always vote together, we all respect each other and admire each other and know we're working hard, and we are going to just let that decision go and move on to the next one. So I am looking forward to our new council members joining us, and I'm so happy that you will be here next to me, I understand. I've enjoyed sitting next to Mr. Heding, and I have been amazed, I have not known him as long as I've known some of the other folks here, but I have been amazed at how often we come to the same decision and ask the same questions and actually accuse each other of reading each other's notes, because we tend to really think alike in a lot of areas. So I wish our exiting people the best of luck, and I want to point out that there are advisory board positions open, so if you still want to serve the public, feel free to apply. I wish them success and happiness. And I look forward to joining, having Dawn and Jeff join us up here, and hopefully we work as collaboratively and cooperatively as this council has. So, thank you all.
Thanks, Marlaus. Red?
For the past two years, I have been blessed and honored to work with colleagues who are diligent, farsighted, and who have always had the best interests of our city deeply implanted in their souls. We've taken on a lot of issues these past two years. I went through our agendas, and I made a list. We updated our general plan and local coastal program and our zoning ordinance. We have twice sent delegations to Washington, DC to successfully advocate for harbor dredging funds. We agreed to participate in construction of a new county animal services shelter. We negotiated a settlement with Charter for remittance of overdue governmental access channel fees that we can use to upgrade our audiovisual equipment. We negotiated the $250,000 grant from the Division of Boating and Waterways to refurbish the boat-launch parking lot next to Tylen's Park. We adopted a cannabis regulation ordinance and received permission from the voters to assess a tax on cannabis operations. We adopted two balanced budgets. We adopted a One Water Plan that includes a capital improvements plan that will keep our drinking water, our wastewater, and our stormwater systems up to date and functional, and that plan is fully funded for the next 20 years. We hired a full-time fire marshal. We purchased Cerito Peak, and we negotiated an agreement with Morro Bay Open Space Alliance to raise money to purchase the property from the city and dedicate it to public use. We partnered with Project Surf Camp. We established and funded Adopt Morro Bay, a program to beautify the city. We negotiated three-year contracts with all three of our bargaining units that substantially reduces the cost of annual renegotiations. We hired a new city manager and a new finance director. We executed a community benefits agreement with Castle Winds and negotiated a $250,000 signing bonus. And we required Castle Winds to negotiate and execute an agreement with our commercial fishermen's organization to protect their rights on the ocean. We reviewed and revised council policies and procedures and advisory board bylaws. We approved the open space next to the Morro Cove development to be named Franklin Riley Park after our town's founder. We adopted the downtown waterfront strategic plan. We adopted the economic development strategic plan and executed a contract with the Chamber of Commerce to implement the plan. We partnered with the Central Coast Maritime Museum Association for use of city-owned property to build a maritime museum on the waterfront. We contracted for engineering design services for the Wharf lift station and off-site pipelines. We put the Market Plaza property up for sale or lease for purposes of redevelopment. We contracted to perform a comprehensive fee study and cost allocation plan. We hired a program manager for the Wharf. We installed fire pits in the North Morro Bay Rock parking lot. We bought a new fire engine pumper. We certified the final EIR for the Wharf. We approved a trailer boat dry storage yard for the Triangle Lot. We issued a request for proposals for a Morro Bay Marine Services facility and boatyard. We adopted fiscal emergency and sustainability plans and comprehensive financial policies. We designated September 21st of each year to be a Day of Peace and the month of September as Peace and Nonviolence Month. We adopted water and sewer surcharges to fund the Wharf. We began a process to update the Harbor Department lease management policy. We applied to State Water Resources Control Board for a state revolving fund loan to reduce the cost of Wharf financing. We applied to EPA for a low-interest WIFI loan. We contracted for groundwater flow modeling and injection testing for future indirect potable reuse in Morro Valley. We approved permanent residential design guidelines. We established a community outreach process for reviewing city goals and objectives. We adopted new reserve policies for all city funds. We contracted for design and construction of the new Wharf. We began the process of acquiring South Bay property for construction of the Wharf. We hosted an Amgen Tour of California stage finish in 2017, and we are hosting another one in 2019. Our finance department purchased and deployed an online transparency portal, OpenGov, that reports to the citizens all city financial transactions. We joined the Monterey Bay Community Power Authority's Community Choice Aggregation Program, and we will begin delivering carbon-free electrical power to Morro Bay residents in 2020 at a monthly rate lower than PG&E. That's what these five people have done in two years. But, as the old cliche goes, there remains more to be done. Some things that I would like to see our new council take up are developing a broader economic base that can help protect us from a downturn in tourism during the next recession, help our existing businesses to grow, devote attention to local housing needs, bring high-speed internet service throughout the city, relocate our visitor center to a prime location with parking, open a history museum, look for funding to restore the position of school resource officer, look for funding to remodel or build a new police station, address our unmet bicycle and pedestrian needs, improve event coordination and communication, develop a parking management plan. And I'd like to do for the harbor what we did for One Water, an assessment and inventory of needs and a 20-year plan for financing improvements. And I think our overarching priority needs to be, put local needs first. That's where my heart is, and that will be my number-one goal. I want to thank this council for its great achievements and the leadership of Jamie Irons, and the dedication, and the secret code messages with my friend Matt.
Well, Marlaus was right, we do read each other's notes. Red said everything I was gonna say.
So we should just clap for you.
Exactly. All right. It sure has been a pleasure serving with all of you, first off. Thanks very much, you guys are great. And I'd like to congratulate Jeff Heller, Dawn Addis, and Dr. John Heding as newly-elected council members and mayor coming forward. Monica, thank you, I wouldn't be here without you.
Thanks to my family for supporting us from the beginning, and thank you, friends, neighbors, and supporters that rallied together over six years ago to say, "Let's do this." And we certainly have. We have an amazing community of smart, engaged citizens. Thank you for trusting me and challenging me and giving me the privilege and honor of serving the city. Thank you to my colleagues on council for the dialogue and discussion on city issues, city issues that became policy and plans, purpose, and a promise to move the city forward. We have accomplished much together, together with our advisory boards, community, employees, and staff. I've had the privilege of serving on three councils, and each council, though unique, all have worked hard with the same purpose, to do the best they can to move the city forward. And each council before us has worked hard to move the city forward, leaving it better than when they found it. I personally want to extend my thanks and gratitude to all of our preceding councils for their sacrifice and service. I've never understood your hard work more than I do now. To our city employees and staff, you're all awesome. I love saying that. It's just fun, it's fun seeing everyone out and about town, and you all truly are just, do such a great job. Whether you're making a rescue by sea or by land, you're there to protect us, you're there to care for us, it could, and often is, hello, how can I help you at the front counter at City Hall, or all hands on deck at Storm Watch, keeping things running and keeping things clear. Thank you. And for our staff here tonight, amongst us on our regular Tuesdays, I have something kind of fun for you. The staff, I sometimes see you as a band, like you're all little rock stars. Some have a little more flair than others, and I can envision you all walking downtown across a crosswalk, one of you barefoot and out of step. We can imagine who that would be. The music is in your staff reports, and I have a hit of your greatest, a list of your greatest hits. For Rob Livik, on the pavement management plan, your greatest hit was titled, "Long and Winding Road." Chief Cox, this is soon to be released, but yours is titled, "Ticket to Ride." Jen Callaway, the new council will be excited to see the new budget report, because yours is titled, "Twist and Shout." Eric, with your storytelling and humor, yours from the harbor was titled, "I Am the Walrus." Dana, this was simple, here comes the sun. Scott Graham, this is an appeal coming to council, and it's titled, "We Can Work It Chief Knuckles, this is for a new fire engine, titled, "With a Little Help From Our Friends." And Joe, with all your wisdom, this, your staff report was titled, "Let It Be." And Scott, to our city manager, with all that we have to do together and all that we do, yours was titled, "Eight Days a Week." I'm super proud to have worked and served with all of you, and I'll miss you all very much. In closing, I also want to reflect on some guiding principles throughout my six years as your mayor, in addition to my oath of office. I developed a saying when I was on planning commission that I use and reflect on, and it goes like this, "It's not about the excuse of what we have today, it's about the vision of what we want to see in the future." As leaders, we have to consider and value our decision for the future, and that was one that I would use. Here's another one that is not a quote of mine, but one that I think is very important. "We can do anything, we just can't do everything." That's about setting goals and priorities, starting it and finishing it. We can accomplish great things, one thing at a time, we just can't do it all at once. And sometimes, we have to ask our community to be patient, so we can finish one thing before we start another. The promise, this is one thing I think about. The promise, that's about honoring and upholding our policies and ordinances, not ignoring them, and if they can't be upheld, then we need to discuss why we have them and what we should do about it. And finally, this statement I heard at a League of California Cities Conference by a panelist who was an attorney. He said, "Whatever you do, protect the body." Translated, he meant, "The elected body is bigger than the elected person. Be respectful to each other." Each one of us on council was not elected to represent the city. We were elected to serve on a council, the elected body, that collectively represents the city. Those are values that guided me in my decision-making, making, when any decision came before us to move the city forward into the future. And with that, it's been a privilege to serve the city, and I want to thank you all. And following this, I think, do we go down to the podium at this point? And I would like, I have one closing presentation down at the podium that I would like to do as well as the outgoing's go down there.
Can we applaud for you?
Oh, gosh. All right.
(applause) So, being a council member and a mayor is an incredibly important thing for our community. It takes good people to step forward to represent all of us, to be willing to be patient, to listen, to expend a serious amount of time, to think, to collaborate, put forward the effort, and most importantly, have a willingness to take on tough issues that don't lend themselves to easy or simple solutions. So on behalf of the city and staff, I'd like to thank the three outgoing members for your incredible service to the city and the Morro Bay community. First off, outgoing mayor, Jamie Irons. Next up, we have outgoing council member, Matt Makawetzki. So Dana, would you please present flowers to Sue for John Heading?[596.66][596.66][applause] And then I think, I think it's important to acknowledge some other people who are in the room here. Councilmember and mayor, their partners and families know the true depth of your effort and sacrifice. Only they know that. And we'd like to honor them by presenting roses to their partners who are here tonight. So Dana, would you please present flowers to Sue for John Heading?[656.66][656.66][applause] Monica for outgoing mayor, Jamie Irons.[673.79][673.79][applause] And last but not least, Diana for outgoing council member, Matt Makowetski.[688.23][688.23][applause] It's been a pleasure working with you all, and thank you so much.
One for posterity. Cool beans, thank you.
If councilmembers elect Heller and Addis would join us, I'll issue the oath of office. And...
You're right here, it's just perfect.
You know how that goes.
Okay, if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, John Heading.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold and defend.
That I will uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties. About which I'm about to enter.
About which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[849.66][849.66][applause]
Yeah.
New council?
That's why we do this.
Very different perspective from the middle here, I must tell you, sitting on the sidelines for so long. It's great to be here tonight, we are gonna go and move to comments by item C4, comments by newly-elected mayor and council members. I'm gonna start with council member Jeff Heller. Jeff, welcome to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John confessed that he ran for mayor so that he could get two trophies tonight.[958.13][958.13][laughter] And he succeeded in that. I'm truly humbled and honored to have been elected to the Morro Bay City Council. To be honest, I wasn't quite sure what I was getting into when I decided to run. I quickly learned that running for public office is a team sport. So I want to take a minute or two to thank some of the many people who helped me with my campaign. I want to thank Betty Winholz, I don't know if she's here tonight, for her wisdom and words of advice throughout. Betty, you ran a great campaign while helping me selflessly with mine. I will never forget your generosity. I want to thank John Weiss for his steady hand and new friendship along the way. And John, you really impressed me with your willingness to try just about anything to get a vote, including wearing the Abe Lincoln costume at the city park. There have been so many others who have helped me gain this seat. My friends who tirelessly installed yard signs, stuffed door hangers, hosted meet-and-greets in their homes, advised me on radio interviews, walked the neighborhoods and knocked on doors with me, and designed our mailers. Then there were the financial donations, large and small. I'll never forget the elderly couple that approached me early on at a council meeting. They stuffed a handful of bills into my hand, I think it was eighty-seven dollars, and wished me luck. It was my first donation, I was so taken aback, I forgot to even ask them their names. So to those two strangers and each and every one of you who've helped me win this seat, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I promise to never forget that you put me here to represent you, all of you. I think we can all agree that these are challenging times for our city. An expensive sewer project that has divided us, an immediate need for affordable housing, a beautiful, spectacular, yet highly sensitive natural environment around us that needs continual protection and preservation. Millions of dollars in unfunded infrastructure needs, street paving, harbor repairs, the intersection at Highway 41 and Main Street, and many more. And of course, the looming impacts that will impact us all for many years, climate change. That's just to name a few. I don't think these are insignificant or normal challenges for a small town of ten thousand five hundred people. And frankly, and I mean absolutely no disrespect, I don't believe that the five volunteers sitting up here, supported by our knowledgeable and hard-working staff, as well as the consultants we hire, can manage these challenges without your help. If we genuinely want to preserve and protect our city for future generations, we really have no other choice but to set aside our past grievances and work together. Does this mean that any of us should pretend to agree with one another when we don't? Absolutely not. Does this mean that any of us should pretend to agree, excuse me, does this mean that any of us should withdraw from actively participating in the governance of Morro Bay because we didn't get our way in the past? Never. What this does mean is that we need your involvement and help now, perhaps more than If you haven't heard, we have thirteen openings in the city on advisory board committees, as well as two positions as planning commissioner. I urge you to apply for one or more of these positions. The application deadline is January 11th. If you can't serve on a board, then pick a topic that concerns you, learn about it, find out how other cities deal with similar problems, and then teach us what you've learned. Continue to stay involved by coming to as many city meetings as you can. Let's not limit our knowledge base to the five of us and the city staff. We need informed ideas, and crazy ideas, and brainstorming, and creative suggestions from everybody in order to face and succeed the challenges before us. We must listen to one another with an open mind, we must learn from one another with an open mind. If we are to succeed in preserving and protecting our city for future generations, we must set aside our past grievances and work together.
Councilmember Addis.
I'd like to thank the outgoing council, and especially outgoing mayor, Irons, and councilmember Makowetski, who are big examples for me as I was on the campaign trail. And a few months ago, it was August 24th, 2018, and I stood in front of a small crowd giving my kickoff speech, and there were two special things about that day. One, obviously, was that I had decided to run for office, but the other that I was, was that I was announcing on the ninety-eighth anniversary of the Nineteenth Amendment. And that was the day that white women earned the right to vote in our country. So on that day, close to a hundred years ago, more Americans than ever before were able to participate in our democracy for the very first time. And while it wasn't until the Voting Rights Act was passed in 1965 that Americans of all races could head to the ballot box, the Nineteenth Amendment is seen as a kickoff of a more representative democracy. And so what this means in real terms is that many of you in this room, and those at home watching, are among the third, or the second, or even the first generation of people who have fully participated in our American democracy. And that's truly no small thing. Nowhere else but in local politics is a single voice or a single vote more important. And so tonight, I believe we're on the edge of our future. It's a future that sometimes feels perilous with our democracy and our climate at stake. We have greater wealth, yet higher poverty than ever before. And while our government becomes more representative, it also feels less accessible for far too many. Yet our future is ripe with opportunity. If we are willing to dedicate ourselves to the common good, we will accomplish great things. I ran for office because it is my deep belief that we require leaders who will look for opportunity and who will govern for our best future. We must have representatives in local office who put community needs first. This includes housing for our working class, our seniors, and our next generation. Growing up with a single mother, who's here in the audience, I know what it is like to have to move due to rising housing costs, and I don't want anyone to have to face that. So I remain committed to building partnerships and looking for solutions to the housing crisis here in Morro Bay. We also need an economy that's thriving with local businesses, head of household jobs, and a balanced city budget. One of Morro Bay's biggest assets is our people, and when we invest in them through local people, through local businesses and job growth, all of us will prosper. But it's also the city's job to maintain and be good stewards of public monies. And so I'm committed to a Morro Bay government that does those things as well. I believe protecting our coast is of prime importance. I moved here, and probably most of you moved here, because you love the coast, and future generations should also benefit from a clean estuary, bay, beaches, and coastal lands. This remains a high priority to me, and something that I'm prepared to work towards. A strong infrastructure is critical to Morro Bay's success. In a time when drought, sea level rise, and wildfires abound, I am committed to ensuring that Morro Bay's future includes clean, secure water. But we also need better roads, carbon-free energy sources, and improved bikeways. I look forward to looking, to working for those solutions as well. And finally, I've talked about ensuring a space where all voices can be heard. I believe this is the crux of our democracy. While Morro Bay may not appear diverse at face value, it is our job to ensure that community and local government are safe, welcoming, and open to the variety of people that live here. I am committed to being the kind of representative who brings others in and works to ensure our community is open to all. So my campaign was built on these five priorities, and as I take my seat tonight, I recommit myself to them, as well as to you. And knowing the importance of every voter, I want to say thank you to each of you tonight. So thank you to my family standing in the back, who has been a fountain of support, to my campaign team, some of whom are also here, who work tirelessly, to supporters who gave their time, their name, and their donations, and to each person who cast your precious vote on me, I thank you. And to those who didn't vote for me, I look forward to earning your trust. While we may have disagreements, together I am sure we can build new common ground. And to my new colleagues, and to staff, and to all of you here, I look forward to working together for Morro Bay's best future.
So we have a first and a second motion, no, that, wow, what a great opportunity to work with some wonderful people. For me, it's, it's a passion to be here. It's not a job, it's not an onerous responsibility, it's a calling. And I'm at that point in my life, unlike some others, where I have the opportunity to choose to walk the beach all day, which is a fun thing to do, by the way, around here, or spend time digging into the issues that have been raised by my counterparts here that I will not repeat in detail. And I choose, everybody's thankful for that, and I choose the latter, because that's my passion and that's my makeup. It's really a love effort for me to be involved in the community. I look forward to public comment, I look forward to the difficult opportunities that we face as a city, I look forward to serving and spending the time necessary to make things happen and to move the community. And so it's, it's with joy that I accept the results of the community. And I want to thank the individual who ran against me, John Weiss, he and I talked before the election, we agreed on how to conduct ourselves, and we honored that throughout the election, and that's extremely important as an example to the community, no matter who wins an election. So, Mr. Weiss, if you're here, or if you're watching, thank you so much for that and honoring that commitment, and I look forward to working with you on ideas that you have in the future for the community. You have heard tonight the what, in terms of needs to be done, but let me speak to the how. And for me, it's not just what needs to be done, but it's how we go about doing it. And, and so I promise, or I commit to this, one, I commit to listen. It's a lifelong, it's taken me a life to learn how to listen, as my wife, my wife will tell you. And it's an acquired skill that is extremely important before engaging one's mouth. And so I commit to you to listen to all voices before acting. Two, I commit to respect. All people... All people groups, all persons, all opinions, all passions that come before us at council meetings. Third, I commit to care for the underprivileged, for the underrepresented, and those that don't often appear here, that if you knock on doors, you find and you hear about in our community, that are underrepresented and undercounted. Four, I think it's four, I commit to concern. Concern for all issues raised. Whether we end up agreeing or disagreeing, my concern will be there as I listen. Five, I commit to diligence in all that I do. I promise to spend the time necessary to do the research and the homework required to make meaningful decisions. Six, I commit to honor. Honor is extremely important, not only honoring people, but also honoring opinions, people groups, and this community as a whole. And last, I promise to put the needs of the community before my own, because that's what service is all about to me. I got a book, I went on vacation with my wife after the campaign, you know, it's exhausting to do this campaign thing, I'd much rather serve than campaign. That being said, we went on vacation for a week, and I got this little book from a friend on Abraham Lincoln, someone I respect greatly for what he did, and it continues to remain true, and he said this, and it makes sense to me, he said, "When contemplating his qualifications for the presidency, he admitted privately," and so I'm admitting privately, these were his words, "the taste is in my mouth, a little. The taste is in my mouth, a little." And at that time, things were very difficult. And he went on just after that to make one of the, I think, most impassioned, greatest speeches that he ever made at Cooper's Union on 2/27/1860. Lincoln said this, "Let us have faith that, excuse me, let us have faith that right makes might, and in that faith, led us to the end, dare to do our duty as we understand it." Those are words to live by. Those are words that I commit to. And tonight, as your new mayor, I want to thank those of you that came out, but especially I want to thank those that are in the trenches that support me. My wife Sue is here, and honey, thank you so much for your support over the last four years, and for allowing me to continue on another two years to do this thing. My daughter Suzanne flew out from Oklahoma, I'm glad to have her here with her support. My daughter Sarah is here with my son-in-law Matt in the community. My grandkids Hannah and Stuart are here, local students, and my niece Maria, as I call her, and her significant other Shep are here, and I am so grateful to have family support for everything that we do in this community. Thank you, and I promise to serve you well as your mayor. Thank you for the blessing of electing me. With that, I'm going to ask that we forego future agenda items tonight to allow us to move forward and consider those at the next meeting, if I have head nods, if that's okay? Good. Unless there are any other comments, we are adjourned. And I should let you know, I'm sorry, the next meeting is Tuesday, January 8th, 2019, at 6:00 PM at the Vets Memorial Hall. Thanks for coming.